...to the redevelopment commission meeting for Wednesday, August 13th through 2014 at 7:16. Please stand your board by the leadings.
My pleasure, Mr. President, to comply with United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice of all.
Roll call, Mr. Malowski.
Mr. Tippy.
Here.
Mr. Canning.
Present.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Coxel.
Here.
Attorney Oshin.
Present.
Deputy Chief, Fire Chief Patterson.
Present.
Chief Dowling.
Here.
Deputy Chief Zagraki.
Here.
Mr. Zany.
Present.
Mr. Hewitt.
Here.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Robin Teal.
Present.
Janice Malowski.
Present.
Very good. Gentlemen, we have the minutes of the July 9th, 2014 public meeting. Pleasure of the commission members.
So.
Second, motion second, any discussion on the minutes? Seeing here, none of them favor, say the same, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Any additional claims, Mr. Malowski?
No additional claims.
Pleasure of the claims regarding commission members. Motion to approve. There's a motion. Second, the second, any discussion on the claim, do you present it? Seeing here, none of them favor, say the same, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Claim passed four zero. Any correspondence regarding redevelopment business?
No correspondence.
Anything from staff or council members regarding redevelopment? Just one comment, I believe shops in Maine are going, moving pretty well there, so. I think that's a good development, so continue now, so getting a lot of positive comments regarding that, so. As a redevelopment, no business, no new business? Any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Any redevelopment business seeing here, none? This being adjourned, we'll go into our water work meeting.
Good evening, I'd like to call the water works meeting for Wednesday, August 13th. Roll call will be outlined as Mr. Canning and Mr. Coxel, or me, just Mr. Tippy or myself. Minutes for the July 9th, 2014 public meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second. All the favor, say the same, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries two zero. Claims, any additional claims, Mr. Malowski?
No, none this time.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second. All the favor, say the same, aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero. Correspondence, Mr. Bowman, any correspondence on the water works?
No correspondence, but I will make one report for the record. That the rate tracker that was approved through the IMRC for the increase in water to share bill by Indiana American will, it was approved, and that rate will pass through. Our customers will begin to see that on their bill in October. The actual rate increase, and actually, we stacked together a few trackers. We didn't do one last year because it was so, it was a very small increase, but with this one, it will increase the average customer who uses 5,000 gallons among their bill by 54 cents to answer the water only. This is strictly a pass-through cost for the increase in wholesale cost of water. It amounts to a 2.10 percent increase in water rate.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Moving on, open, no business, new business? Resolution 2014 dash four, a resolution to transfer funds within category appropriations. Mr. Malowski.
So gentlemen, this is definitely for the Water O and M Fund, and it is transferring some appropriation funding from the 200 or supply level and the 400 capital level to 300 levels, which is services.
Thank you, Mr. Malowski.
You're welcome.
And the motion to approve resolution 2014 dash four.
We have a motion, we have a second. All the favor, say the same, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries two zero. Is now open for business from the floor regarding water works? Any business from the floor regarding water works? No business, this being adjourned, we'll write it to the utility board. Call the order to utility board meeting. With the roll call, will that Mr. Canning and Mr. Coxel back to the roll call? Minutes of the July 9th, 2014 public meeting.
So. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All the favor, say the same, aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four zero. Claims, any additional claims?
No additional claims.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. All the favor, say the same, aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four zero. Correspondence regarding utilities, Mr. Bowman?
No correspondence or reports.
No reports, staff members? Council members? No old business, no new business? We'll open, I'll back up to the floor regarding utilities. Any comments on the floor regarding utilities?
Um, if there, if there, just one item. Mr. Hewitt, regarding utilities, I know we had, Hamlin Lane, we had the replacement of that water line.
Yes.
I think we see a phone call today, probably this earlier. Um, from Brenda and Tim Dillon. They're on the north side of that where the bottom line started regarding restoration that was done. There was a concern about the restoration, it not being completed as necessary, or the grass not coming in, do you just have to look at it?
I will give either as quickly as I can, and we will address it as needed.
Right, that's it, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Coxel. Uh, any business from the floor regarding utilities? No business, we'll turn this meeting, we'll write it to Tom Housing.
I'd like to call you Tom Housing to order Wednesday, August 13th, 2014. But their records show that the same roll call utility board is present here. Gentlemen, minutes of the July 9th, 2014 public meeting. Pleasure of the council members.
So, Mr. Chairman.
With the motion, second. Second. Any discussion on the minutes, seeing here, none of them favor, say the same, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries four zero. Any additional claims, Mr. Malowski?
Mr. President, no additional claims.
Pleasure of the council members on claims.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? Seeing here, none of them favor, say the same, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Claims passed four zero. Any correspondence, Mr. Bowman?
No correspondence.
Any reports this time from staff members? People around the arm, Deputy Chief Patterson, anything on fire side?
Nothing, thank you.
Chief Dowling?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take a few minutes tonight to give the council a report, as well as provide an news release to the media that's here today about recent re-accreditation process. On July 26th, 2014, the Sheriff of Police Department received its Kalia re-accreditation from the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies at a conference held in Schaumburg, Illinois. The purpose of Kalia's accreditation program is to improve the literary and public safety services primarily by maintaining a body of standards developed by public safety practitioners covering a wide range of up-to-date public safety initiatives, establishing and administering an accreditation process, recognizing professional excellence. The subject of Kalia's goals are to strengthen crime prevention and patrol capabilities, normalizing essential management procedures, establish fair and non-discriminatory personnel practices, improve service delivery, solidify inter-agency cooperation and coordination, and increase community and staff confidence in the agency. The Kalia accreditation process is a proven modern management model. One simple bit, it represents the agency's chief, uh, represents the agency's chief executive officer on a Q and A basis with a blueprint that promotes the efficient use of resources and improved service delivery, regardless of the site geographical location or functional responsibilities of the agency. There are five general phases or steps in the accreditation process. Enrollment, self-assessment, onsite assessment, commission review and decision, and maintaining compliance and re-accreditation. Sheriff of Police Department recently completed the maintaining compliance and re-accreditation phase. During its three-year accreditation award cycle, the agency must maintain compliance with applicable standards, keep its approach of compliance up-to-date, and live by the letter and spirit of those standards. To retain its accreditation status, the agency is required to submit to Kalia their appropriate accreditation continuation fees as well as annual report. Re-accreditation occurs at the end of three years following another successful onsite assessment inherent with the commission. During the onsite assessment, Sheriff of Police Department had zero non-compliance issues and zero conditions needing attention. We are proud that of the 13 agencies receiving their accreditation, Sheriff of was the only agency that achieved both zero non-compliance and zero conditions. Sheriff of Police Department's administration is proud of this accomplishment and believes the citizens of Sheriff of deserve to have a department worthy of this award. That basically completes our news release, but I wanted to just take a minute to say thank you to the men and women of the police department for doing an excellent job to meet those standards. Some of you that were there, um, you know, Mr. Coxel was there. We were overwhelmed by the, uh, by the report that was given to us by commissioners and their very common department. In particular, how we come up with this is every week we have a staff meeting level to talk about accreditation, and I just wanted to take a minute to recognize the people that have been involved, that found myself, Deputy Chief Zagraki. Corporal Tim Martinis is our accreditation manager. Commander Michael Vogt in our Criminal Investigations Division, and Commander Ryan Knight, they were a big part of making all this happen, and I just wanted to take a moment tonight to recognize and say thank you.
Thank you, Chief, congratulations to you and your staff for, um, getting an excellent report on Kalia. So I mean, that shows, uh, shows what our citizens in our community, you know, what type of standards that we're going by and that basically we're doing right things, so hopefully the reporters out here think it was a good, uh, report in a paper regarding this recognition that we got from Kalia, so congratulations.
Is that in the line?
Yes. Thank you. Staff members? Robinson, is there?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just make a little report on Stephen Park. On Friday, August 1st, we did a final walkthrough. The park was completed, and then according to that plan specifications, it's my understanding that the park is open and ready for use. It's very good.
Thank you.
I did stop by after it opened up, and it was, it wasn't used, it wasn't well-used at that time. So it seems like it's been low-received by the children that use that playground.
Very good. Very good.
Uh, one quick item, just like to call your attention to the staff's report prepared by Butler, Fairman, and Cypher Engineers on the Roundabout Project. Uh, the project is about 30 percent complete at this point in time. It is going smoothly, uh, albeit a little bit, we are on schedule, but it does seem to be moving slow. We have been, uh, with the start of school yesterday, we've been diligent to see that the children are being picked up safely and smoothly. Uh, that has gone, all the project is moving along on schedule.
Very good, thank you, very good. Mr. Bowman, anything at this time?
Nothing else.
Chief present, I knew it came in late, did anything you want to report this time to the council?
No, sir, thank you.
Alright, council members, anything at this time?
Mr. Schmidt?
At this time, any other comments regarding agenda items? Any other comments regarding agenda items, seeing here, none of that, new business? And we have before us orders number 1854, which is orders amended to orders number 1797. As amended, the same being in orders, thus fine regulating restricting the location, height, area block, and use of buildings and structures, and use of land in the town sheriff's, and for said purposes dividing town and districts nominated for the addition. This is Plan Commission Case Number 14-8-15. Commissioners, Lake County Trust Company has trustee of trust number 4973, Roger Shapiro. General location 228 East Lemon Highway. Resumé from residential R12 highway, commercial C3. Plan Commission Federal Accreditation comes to us 7-0. Mr. Bowman, can you briefs anymore on this item?
This is actually a piece of property that Mr. Shapiro picked up just prior to when we redid the zoning ordinance. It was a residential property, it was zoned R1. We left it, left the zoning in place at that time, even though it was inconsistent with the comprehensive plan because that was what the use of the property was. So, uh, currently, Mr. Shapiro has taken, taken over that property, and to be, this is like the first step on the redevelopment of that whole corner, where the last midline is, he owns the next two properties that go up towards the alleyses, is to get the zoning in place. There'll be a replodding process following this up, and he's been working with different develop, different clients on development plans of the whole site. This is just the first step in that process.
Very good, thank you.
Uh, Bob, will all the properties we see through then?
All of the properties there will be seen through, the only, there's one other property along 30 that I can just still residentially zone in that section, and that's the one, Al Gore's, his old house there, up like a, underpass by the, by the bike trail.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Councilman. I move to approve, uh, fine, orders of 1854.
Single reading?
Yeah.
Is there a motion, councilman, regarding, uh, supporting orders of 1854, first reading? Is there a second?
Second, just with the discussion.
Second, okay, discussion.
This comes to us with the unanimous favorable whole recommendation of the Plan Commission.
Alright, all the favors, can we say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carries four zero.
Next item, I D is Resolution 2014 dash 11. It's a resolution to transfer funds within category appropriations. Mr. Malowski, is it gives you something of your, uh, heritage?
Yes, thank you. We have a various department that has various transfers of funds amounting to $5,600, and that's actually a property tax fund. And then we have our cable TV fund supported by France franchise fees. We have transfers, inter-fund transfers there of $144,500.
Pleasure of the council regarding resolution, 2014, as well. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion on the motion? Seeing here, none of them favor, say the same, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carries four zero. I have seen as consider approval of the Residence at Deer Creek signage. District Plan Commission Case Number 14-8-6. Commissioner Fane Jacob, Jackman. Location 401 US Avenue. Favor recommendation with contingency 7-0. Mr. Bowman?
Mr. Coxel, um, you know, as you're aware, they're going to put an addition on Residence at Deer Creek, and in that process, working with Frank and Panzita, their, their architectural group, we talked about they have an overall signage plan for the whole development. They've developed that, and that's why going through the Plan Commission process for approval, for consistency with our ordinance and for the uniqueness of this parcel. Uh, so they actually did have a sign plan for the whole development, which will include future buildings there, so. This is pretty consistent with what we've done, like the 833 building, we just did it with that, so that there's a, there's one signage plan for the whole development.
Thank you. Pleasure of the council members regarding this item.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Since we're on the Deer Creek, uh, subject, I triggered the thought. I got a couple, a couple calls this weekend, this would be addressed to Mr. Dowling and maybe Commander Knight. I'm getting, we're getting complaints about people that are heading westbound on 30, cutting across into Deer Creek and taking Deer Creek's road all the way around to Austin, so they beat the left turn at night going in, you know, going in if you're heading southbound on Austin. Is there anything that we can do there, uh, chief or commander? Maybe with signage or the law patrol or something?
Jeff is editing, it's in the town street, or is it?
It, it is a private street, uh, both, uh, from the, uh, from the front of the building to 30 and from the front of the building to Austin Avenue, it is private.
Being that it's private, if we then that goes a public, public roadway, then obviously they, they're able to do that. So, yeah, we can, we'll take a look at that.
Is that, is that something, Commander Knight, is that something that you could ticket someone for cutting through there, or not really?
Not really. Alright, well, gentlemen, we can address that later, we break your force, we have this, uh, this signage case here before us.
Any motion on the case? Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request. Motion, and a second, any discussion? Seeing here, none of them favor, say the same, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries four zero. And chief, if you can, uh, maybe work with the, uh, the staff over there and the residents over there, and see if there's something that we can do, I know it's a private street, it sounds like, but if there's something we can do, or maybe assist him or advise him what type of signage they can put up themselves to keep it from adding to the total.
If I can, uh, chief, if you just want to keep my contact information, and we can arrange the, um, the facility. I want to thank the council for the report.
Great, thank you, great. I D, consider approval of request from Lake County Raiders substitution payment directly to RA Horos in amount of $20,550 original amount, plus an additional $2,875 for coal patching for the spring stream emergency coalwork replacement project. Mr. Bowman, proceed.
Um, yes. Actually, this was for the, the coalwork that we replaced, this was our participating among that we agreed with who interlokal render with the drainage board. But in the agreement, the drainage board had the check on Blue Lake County and them paying the contractor. I got a letter from the drainage board requesting that we pay the contractor directly, because when, as Janice can attest to, when, once you bring that in and become miscellaneous revenue, it's hard to track through your books, they're actually going to change their interlokal, uh, agreement. Uh, I, I did, they, originally, that's why the payment's been held up so long, is, you know, the drainage board, I told them, you know, this is what the directions of the interlokal is, you're to bill me, and I'm to pay, pay the county. Well, they, they evidently used the wrong format in their interlokal agreement, and so I got direction from their attorney, uh, basically through the, their board, that they request that we pay directly to the contractor. I don't have a problem with that, so this is what the additional money, the $2,800, was when the work was done in the winter, was to, uh, pay for coal patching, which was not part of the original coal project.
Mr. Oshin, seeing, Bob, because, yeah.
As long as it's the same amount that we paid the county, if it were going to the county first, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, is, is, Bob, is RA Horos, is that who the contractor is?
That was the contractor that did the project for the county drainage board.
Would the approve, Mr. Chairman?
Motion to approve. Second. Second, any additional discussion? Seeing here, none of them favor, say the same, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carries four zero. Next item, I D is, uh, proclaim the month of September, 2014, as childhood cancer awareness month in the town sheriff's. We have a proclamation here. I will read it to everyone. Reclamation, childhood cancer awareness month, September, 2014. Whereas, cancer is number one killer for our children by disease, with an estimated 13,500 children diagnosed every year in the United States alone. On average, one in every four elementary schools has a child with cancer. The average high school has two students who are current or former cancer patients. And whereas, many children with rare and aggressive cancers are already stage five. Six four, excuse me. And diagnosis, and diagnosis, and three out of five childhood cancers require experience of long-term late effects from treatment including secondary cancers. And whereas, the incidence of cancer among adolescents and young adults is increasing at greater rates than any other age group, except for over 65 years of age, and estimated 2,555 children die each year of cancer in the United States alone. The average age of death from childhood cancer is eight, causing a child to lose 69 years of expected life. And whereas, despite these facts, childhood cancer research is vastly consistently underfunded. In 20 years, the FDA had initially approved only two drugs for bringing childhood cancer, and half of all chemotherapy used for children cancers are over 25 years old. And whereas, research and development for new drugs for pharmaceutical companies 60, comprises 60 percent of funding for adult cancer drugs, and close to zero for childhood cancers. And the NCI spends 96 percent of its budget on adult cancers, only 4 percent on children's cancers. And whereas, the causes of most childhood cancers are unknown, and at present, childhood cancers cannot be prevented. And families who are or have been in treatment were targeted to change these alarming statistics. Now, therefore, I might propose a present to Tom Housing, showing me and Mr. Shapiro proclaim the month of September, 2014, to be childhood cancer awareness month in the town sheriff's, dated the 13th day of August. Motion to approve.
Second, motion to approve in a second. All the favors, say the same, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Thank you, there was some interesting facts here that I wasn't worried about, so. Would you like to say something?
You would.
Alright.
Um, good evening, first of all, I just want to thank the town sheriff's and many people in this room who have supported this mission from day one. As you all know, this is home to Nick. Um, we've, um, finally moved into an office, and so we are officially a corporation of sorts. Um, this is the third year in a row that we have done this in Lake County, and I'm also proud to say that the state of Indiana was the first state this year to proclaim, uh, childhood cancer awareness month in December. Northwest Indiana is going to be represented in Washington for a march on the mall on September 21st. Uh, we are part of a national coalition now, and we are working for reduction of ID health in Indianapolis, so you're going to be hearing a lot about us. It has not been a happy year for our foundation. Um, we have now just day 10, new diagnosis in Lake County beginning of year. Five of them since the beginning of the summer. Those statistics that you read, you did not change, they have been changed, but because the governor used those exact words on February 20th, you won't believe them. But next year, you're going to see that, um, that 13,500 number is now up over 15,000. And today, 40 parents heard the words, your childhood cancer. So, I just, um, first of all, ask that you support our awareness walk, which is going to be September 7th, um, at Lemon Lane. I want to thank you for supporting our research efforts because that should be the ultimate goal of any future foundation this year. I would love to be tired someday. Um, so thank you so much for, for supporting our, um, Alice Lemonade Sam. We, um, are showcasing our local heroes, our police, our fighter, um, our doctors, our nurses, they go out there, our EMTs, our paramedics, they go out there every day and risk their lives. Um, so they're going to be supporting these little heroes this year, so I really, really would love for my hometown to have a lot of sheriff's t-shirts walking. It's a wonderful afternoon, the sheriff is going to land a helicopter, the K-9 dogs will be there. Lots of fun things for the kids, it's only three hours, um, at Lemon Lane, so we will be calling them to see what level of support people have. And last, I would just ask that whatever issues you all have before you appear tonight, keep them in perspective, um, and keep these families and these children in prayers because at any time, any of us could hear your childhood cancer. So thank you again for sticking with us and supporting our mission.
You're welcome, thank you for the appearance. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Don?
Yes.
What, what time does the walk start?
It's 2:00 at Lemon Lane. Um, we were at the fairgrounds last year, but there were few nervous moments because you can drive cars through there, and there were like 500 children, so. Lemon Lane is a little safer, it's 2 to 5, very afternoon, lots of fun stuff, music, food, everything. So come on out, support these families who are your neighbors, so we appreciate that.
Very good. Item F, discussing approval, purchase of radios for the Police Department and Fire Departments for P-SAT. Mr. Woblen, I need you to put together some paperwork for us regarding with the one SARS from our respective departments.
Mr. Chairman, in your calendar, you see some spreadsheets that were divided by, by the police and fire department, highlighting the need for 700 hundred-hertz radios for each of their departments. What I'm asking for tonight is for, the total price in the spreadsheets is 610,996.88, I'm asking tonight is, is for the council to approve, put treasure, Janice, Bellowsky, and I to allow us to evaluate these proposals and move forward towards possible purchase of, of these radios before September 1st, which is kind of a deadline. The September 1st is when the special pricing that was granted to all of the Lake County communities, the motorola expires, and our price could go up $86,000, so we want to evaluate the needs, working with the two chiefs, and then get bids, you know, look at the bids or how the bids work, so that we can put together an RTP for this.
I think you mentioned there's savings by September 1st, so close to...
$86,000 if, if waited after September 1st.
Well, it's a substantial savings, I think we should move forward with the, the basic investigative purposes of getting these radios before that thing to, to, so, sir. Pleasure of the council to move forward, I'll make a motion to move forward. Is that motion, in a second?
I have a question for Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Hold on, okay, sorry. Yes, but, Bob, will you then notify us when you're, you've finished your, what's going to trigger the notifying us to confirm?
I'll keep you guys in mind, too, in your thread, you know, because I'll need you to come in and sign the RTP, you know, get that, evaluate it to that end, and get an RTP financing for this, I would anticipate that we would handle at a future meeting day. We probably will help research some, some of the kind of financing that happens, but my understanding is we have to commit to the purchase before September 1st.
Thank you. There's been a motion, second, all favor, is there saying aye?
Aye.
Close, same thing. Motion carries for zero. Next item, G is consider donation to Campaign Academy for their run, for Horos' schedule for Saturday, February 18, $1,014. Pleasure of the council members regarding this donation.
Mr. Chairman, I believe this is the same amount that we donate every year, isn't that correct?
Yes, it's been for the past several years, for the Campaign Academy.
I make a motion to approve the donation.
There's been a motion, second, second, in discussion on donation, hearing, seeing none, all favor, is there saying aye?
Aye.
Close, same thing. Motion carries for zero. Thank you. Next item, item H is consider approval acceptance of certificate of release, the amounts of $13,950 for the public development for Jeff York, Fred, Republic Works, this is for Tambo subdivision. Mr. Urid or Mr. Woblen?
This is the, for the public improvements of this subdivision, this is a Tambo restaurant, in their redevelopment, they had, it was actually right around 15,000 something in improvements that were public, considered public improvements, that they were required to post bond for. This is the reduction down to the 10% to your maintenance portion, they posted, actually posted this money in cash to the current treasurer's office, this will be, you know, reimbursement to them of their cash, cash bond.
Okay, I know that this, they completed that project, it looks good. They did, it's a nice restaurant, it looks like M&amp;N, good. All right, pleasure of the council regarding this, um, release.
Motion to approve.
So I'll vote for approve in a second, in discussion on it, hearing, seeing none, all favor, is there saying aye?
Aye.
Close, same thing. Motion carries for zero. Next item is appointment to Board of Safety, gentlemen, as, as we know, we lost a Board of Safety number in June, Mr. John Flagland, and we need to make a replacement for that position, and I, I spoke to Chief Kuzan, he had mentioned to me, and some of the firefighters, that possibly having somebody with firefighter experience would be a good addition to that board. I, I asked for names from the city of Chicago, and actually the city of Hanover regarding some retirees who live in our community, and one of the names that was, was in there was Jeffrey Ement, and I asked Mr. Ement to fill out the case now, he, he is a professional firefighter retired, living in our community, and I'd like to make his recommendation to fill out the remaining term for that seat in the Board of Safety. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, does he, how long does he see you on that appointment?
It's the menu, it's the end of this year, so approximately five minutes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'll make the motion to approve that one, second.
There's no motion, second, in discussion on the appointment, hearing, seeing none, all favor, is there saying aye?
Aye.
Close, motion carries for zero, thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Woblen, can you make sure you allow some statements?
Yes.
And notify the Board of Safety, and I believe I might be meeting tomorrow, and I'll guess it's probably too early, but at least notify him if he wants to attend tomorrow, he's welcome to, mention. Next item, gentlemen, is appointment to South Shore Community Visitor Authority, this is an appointment that we have not made to the South Shore, and we're required to make this appointment. I know the, I think the appointment's going through until July 2015, my recommendation is for Larry Tucker, Mr. Tucker's been a resident in town here for 36 years, he's a former council member, he's also a restaurant owner, I think you'd be good to appoint to South Shore Community Visitor Authority for a major return, which is approximately 10 months, 11 months.
Would they approve this, Mr. Chairman?
A motion to approve, Mr. Tucker?
Second.
Second, in discussion on this appointment, hearing, seeing none, all favor, is there saying aye?
Aye.
Close, motion carries for zero, thank you, gentlemen. Next, we have consider donation to the Sheriff's Baseball League. Gentlemen, as you know, the Sheriffville Baseball League, one of their teams, the Sheriffville Shock, is moving forward towards the Babe Ruth Road Series in Longview, Washington, and looking to see if we can help with their efforts in raising money for their trip. There's approximately 15 members of that team, so looking to see if there's a donation request and we can donate towards these young guys that want. Any pleasure of the council members of, of...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
First of all, this is the same team, they're called Sheriffville Shock, when they were 13 years old, they went to the same World Series, and it's quite, it's quite a team, and we're really proud of what they represented in Ohio Valley for the Town Sheriffville, and now moving into the United States World Series in that, in that league. So I would definitely like to make a motion to have a donation to the Sheriff Baseball League Shock team, I would like to make a motion to donate $2,000 to their, to their cause for the, for the trip.
There's motion for $2,000?
Second.
Second, in discussion on that, seeing here in all favor, is there saying aye?
Aye.
Close, same thing. Motion carries for zero, very good, good luck to Sheriffville Shock. Next item, we have the...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Just to obviously double the amount of the, not the, the innkeeper's tax.
It would, it could come out of the innkeeper's tax, basically both funds over to the promotion, so you'll get out of model nine promotion.
Thank you.
Next, we, we have the consideration for the second donation, so only $6,495.25. Just, I'm asking, agree these if you like, or we accept donations at the R, whatever you prefer.
Um, I'll be quick, I think.
Okay.
By equipment fund donations, Enterprise TV Comics Pipeline Company LLC 500, Sheriffville Central Lines Club Inc. 500, Total 1,000, Community Watch Program, Lake Central Line Company, Sheriffville Central Lines Club Inc. $34.26, National Night Out is the favorite collector this time, Shepherd Memorial Hall 100, Times W. Daniel Company PC 50, Everyday Office Supply Inc. 25, Ed Krasowski Insurance, Insurance Agency Inc. 25, Optic Dwellings Systems Inc. 50, Alexis Jared 50, Fairmills Home House Center 100, Bondor Electric, I don't know if it's supposed to be Indiana or Indiana?
Indiana.
Indiana, thank you, Bob, 100, Bright Health Company Inc. 100, Allen Wentz Heating &amp; Sound 15, Midwest Pipeline Research Company Inc. 75, Midwest Insurance Center 15, Gold Realty LLC 50, Sherwood Golf Concessions Inc. 100, Doug Hill Formal Art Inc. 15, Poly-Ole Car Sporty, Maple 100, Merle's Heating and Air conditioning 100, Empire Duck Pivots 200, Spikes Lakeside Inn 2, Inc. 100, Sheriffville Central Lines Club Inc. 250, The Commencie Companies LLC 50, Lori and Bolson BC 75, Atol of Craynor, the Donnas 200, Yacht Inc. 30, Pete's RV Center 200, Riverdale System 100, Anita, the Town Schmidt Club 50, Timber Masters 200, Russian Kite Designs PC 100, Committee to Luxury Shoot 100, Pushes Sports in Indiana 30, Enbridge Energy 250, Millsight Motors 50, Sheriffville City Fund Inc. 200, Lake Hills Baptist Church 50, Allen's Village of Indiana Inc. 100, Leeser and Wiley Bell P. 200, Rockwood Furniture LLC 1,000, Rob Getsaw 100, Lake Ridge Republican Women's Club 200, Sheriffville Upper P. 250, Freedom Church of God 50, total $5,450, grand total $6,442.5. I know that's a lot, but here's a lot of names.
Good, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pleasure of the council members on accepting these donations, motion to approve, motion to second?
Second.
Second, in discussion. All favor, is there saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, close, same thing. Very good. We accept those, very good, it's good, we have a community that likes to donate to defense. At this time, this is the board regarding, uh, council.
Yeah, my name is John Connectia, I'm in Sheriff's Force. Chief Dowling, just want to say, your police force does a fantastic job, unfortunately, this has to do not necessarily with your department, but the time that these gentlemen have to spend out of their days. We have solicitors in Sheriffville, for-profit solicitors, that I've had to call the police on multiple occasions, to the point where last week, my wife was harassed on the front lawn, and she could not get them to leave our property, police were notified, we were told that they had approved solicitor's license from the Town Sheriffville, I have then, I then went to the police department, and I went to talk to Mr. Woblen, explain to get a process, and what I'd like to ask the board is, that we don't allow for-profit solicitors in our town. I don't have any problems with Lake Central, churches, boys scouts, girl scouts, but the for-profit solicitors that have come to my home have always been a problem. I have a problem getting rid of them, my wife always has a problem getting rid of them. If you listen to your constituents, they have the same issues as I do, this is a real issue that, for whatever reason, has not been addressed in the Town Sheriffville.
Thank you for your comments, I'm not saying it hasn't been addressed, I mean, we've, I mean, this is the first time I'm hearing of an issue coming forward regarding solicitors, so we take your, you know, your concerns very seriously, and I think it's probably something we should look at. I know when our complaints do come to either the police or our town hall here, will you log those complaints when you get them? Have you received any complaints?
This actually is, there's this solicitors group that's, I think they're doing alarms, they have been the source of several complaints over the last two weeks, and I'm working with Chief Dowling to review it and do our ordinance, actually, I'm going to give you guys all a copy of our solicitor's ordinance, so that you can review it, I talked to John, although I don't know that anybody would, you'd have a couple get rid of some, I think you could get rid of some.
Well, the problem is, is that I've had trouble getting rid of people, and when that happens, I mean, now you have a group of individuals who do not say no, and when I feel uncomfortable in my own home, my wife feels uncomfortable in her own home, and our neighbors do, that's a problem.
I agree, I think you bring up a very good concern here to our community and our residents, and we will, as Mr. Woblen said, we'll review our current ordinance and see if we can make adjustments to it, to make it a better and safer community. So we'll probably look at a safety, a study session, we'll review that, and Woblen, make sure that we come and listen for our study session, and add your comments there also.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, in, in the interim period here before we review the ordinance, can we revoke their privileges?
That's actually...
Perhaps we should just, anyone who gives, revoke the entire company?
That's, that's actually what the threat, that's the problem right now.
Send us off the street till we get this straight now.
Just get rid of them, because they've been the source of too many complaints from various residents and various, and I mean, they're just, they're actually what I call kind of fluffing the sale, they're, they're actually fictitious endorsements from town officials, things like that, it's just not called for, I want to go on.
Well, you know what, why don't we do this, Mr. Tipton, for the formal motion, why don't we suspend any for-profit solicitations, and aren't giving them to a computer or... At this time, I, I will make that motion today. Other than, there's second, in discussion on the motion, may, seeing here in all favor, is there saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, close, same thing. All right.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your, thanks for your...
Thank you.
Mr. President, I want to allow this, okay?
Yes.
Getting above four classes.
They got above, they got a little more from Mr. or Tom Andrew on that, so.
Okay.
Great. Any other business before we, regarding town business? Any business with Florida town business?
I just have one comment, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to commend the Police Department for the National Night Out, last week, they did a terrific job, you know, his staff, all who puts it together, I mean, it was a great night, and the weather couldn't have been better, certainly was a great Toronto, what your, your gate was there, chief of, I committed the whole department for putting together a nice event for the community.
One other thing, I think, I know we have a 9/11 memorial coming up in September.
Yes, first of all, on the National Night Out, thank you, Mr. Woblen, and yeah, our attendance, we've got some preliminary numbers, we'll have a breakdown of the percentage of Sheriffville residents and all that, but we're at right around 1,900 in attendance last Tuesday, and it was a beautiful night, so thank you for the comments, and it was, you know, mostly the credit, I just got Officer Ronald Kyle, I wonder who else, who fell the time in on, on that project. Remember, September 11 memorial, we will be having our memorial, any memorial service on September 11 at 6:00 PM in the Park Lot of Police Station.
Very good, make sure we get that information out to our residents. Very good, with any other business before we, seeing none, our next public meeting for the Town Council, you do have a board to redevelop, it will be on Wednesday, September 10th, so that being said, this means adjourned, that great evening.